They're both on Zoom.
Oh, I didn't know that. Sorry. I apologize.
So we have both Alder Person Turchi and Alder Person Kohler attending via Zoom. Super. Thank you.
And also should be pointed out that Alder Person Dennis Hagie and Alder Person Kyle are not here excused.
Correct. Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have the oath of office, which is administered by our city clerk Lori Hetzel.
Can we confirm they hear us?
Okay, can you hear? Can you both hear me?
I can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And that will be for our two new Alder Persons, Dennis Regan and Tina Savage. What holy on Jeff.
Do you want to stand by the microphone?
Oh, they've never been by the microphone before.
Hey, get him with the camera.
I, Dennis Regan. Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of Second District Alder Person.
To the office of Second District Alder Person.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
I, Tina Savage. Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of Third District Alder Person.
To the office of Third District Alder Person.
Swear that I will support.
Swear I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
And the duties of said office.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Please sit down.
Hey, now, sit down.
Yes, please. Have your seats.
It's nice to be able to say ladies and gentlemen again. Move your name tag over one.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the nomination and election of the council president.
I will let. Steve, if you wanted to handle that.
I believe you all received a slip of paper in for the voting purposes. But first, we looked for a recommendation to the board for a nominee.
I'd like to nominate Wayne Rosniak.
I'd like to nominate Jeff Turchi.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Third call, any other nominations? If not, we have two nominees. Alder Person Turchi, would you accept the nomination?
I will.
Alder Person Rosniak, would you accept the nomination?
Yes, I will.
We have two candidates for nomination for council president. At this time, we'll have everybody fill out their ballot.
I need a ballot.
You can't fill out two forms, just so you know.
He wasn't sitting there when he originally handed them on.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Steve, how do you want us to vote?
I wanted to vote for me.
Because the fact of you have to be, it has to be seen that's from you, we'd ask that you do a verbal vote for both of you.
That's fine.
First of all, so we'll take Alder Person Turchi, your vote is four.
For myself?
Alder Person Kohler, your vote would be four?
Jeff Turchi.
Okay.
I don't get the vote. If there's a tie, we're putting Lori Hetzel as the.
I'll read the results. One vote for Alder Person Turchi. One vote for Alder Person Rosniak. One vote for Alder Person Rosniak. One vote for Alder Person Rosniak. One vote for Alder Person Turchi. One vote for Alder Person Rosniak. One vote for Alder Person Rosniak. Five to four, I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six to three?
No, five to four.
Five to four.
For Rosniak.
For Rosniak. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the mayoral appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. I will hand that over to the person who puts up with me every year to get these on, and that would be our city clerk Lori Hetzel.
Plan Commission, we have Mayor Timothy Mahalik, Chairperson Joel Kohler, Aldermanic Representative Ralph Kuppert, David Paquette, and Brian Balin are citizen members, and the alternate is Doug Carroll. Airport Committee is Mayor Timothy Mahalik, Jim Lockbaum, and Steven Krog, citizen members. Board of Review would be Doug Carroll, Aldermanic Representative, Joel Philip, alternate, Aaron Raymer, and Brady Johnson, citizen members. Business Improvement District, Wayne Rosniak, Aldermanic Representative, Tina Savage, Jason Wicks, Diane Meyer, Jennifer Einwalder, citizen members. The Community Development Authority, we'd be Joe Kohler, Chairperson, Tony Garza, Aldermanic Representative, Joshua Smith, and Aaron Raymer, citizen members. The Joint Planning Committee, Mayor Timothy Mahalik and Jeff Turchi, Aldermanic Representative. Library Board, Justin Webb, Aldermanic Representative, Sherry Perman, and Jeff Walters, citizen members. Mid-Marin Legislative Committee, Dennis Hagie, City Liaison, Mayor Timothy Mahalik. Outreach on Aging is Mayor Timothy Mahalik Liaison, Dennis Reagan, Aldermanic Liaison. Parks and Recreation Commission, Joe Kohler, Aldermanic Representative. Police and Fire Commission, Tony Garza, Alder Person Liaison, Tom Stapleton, citizen member. Sex Offender Residency Board, Brady Johnson and Josh Smith, citizen members. Tourism Commission, Mayor Timothy Mahalik, elected official, Administrative Steve Volker, city staff. Tina Savage, Wisconsin Hospitality Representative, James Berg, County Board Supervisor, and Kate Carroll, Business Community Representative. zoning Board of Appeals is Todd Boltman, citizen member, and Josh Smith, alternate. For the Standing Committees, Finance and Personnel, Chairperson Wayne Rosniak, Vice Chairperson Joel Kohler. Alder Person Tina Savage, Alder Person Joel Philip, and Alternate Alder Person Dennis Reagan. Standing Committee Public Works, Chairperson Joel Philip, Vice Chairperson Tony Garza. Alder Person Tina Savage, Alder Person Doug Carroll, and Alternate Alder Person is Justin Webb. Standing Committee Utility, Chairperson Jeff Turchi, Vice Chairperson Dennis Reagan. Alder Person Doug Carroll, Alder Person Justin Webb, and Alternate Alder Person Joel Philip.
One correction I'd like to make, just for clarification, under the Business Improvement District, there are no citizen members. Those are all paying members of the bid, just to make it very clear.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions? Would look for a motion to approve. We have one by Doug Carroll, second by Joe Philip.
Motion by Alder Person Carroll, seconded by Alder Person Philip approving the mayoral appointments as read.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Joe and Jeff, I'm sorry, I cut you guys off.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I will give the requisite Zoom pause after this. Thank you. Unanimous consent agenda, I don't see anything under that, so we will skip over to the mayor's report, which is the National Tennis Month Proclamation. After we do our citizen comments.
Excuse me, Mayor?
With that. Yes.
I do have one communication this evening.
Oh, you do. It's not listed on here. Okay.
No, no, last minute.
Last minute communications, our city clerk Lori Hetzel.
The city has received the following annexation petition. Ridgeway Investments LLC has submitted a petition for direct annexation by unanimous consent for approximately 11.69 acres of land located at tax key number T 6039 300-Z. The address is 7520 and 7542 West State Trunk Highway 60. The petition will be referred to the Plan Commission for review and recommendation before returning to the council for a public hearing and action.
Okay. Thank you very much. So more people just clamoring to be part of the city of Hartford. I don't blame them. Okay. And with the appearance of citizen comment, anybody wishing to come up, you get three glorious minutes, just state your name and address. Second call. Third call. Seeing none.
Thank you for that incredible reminder. You're just testing it, right?
Yes, thank you, thank you. And the mayor's report, the May National Tennis Month Proclamation, yes, we have yet another proclamation. We couldn't get enough last week, so we've got another one this week. A proclamation, whereas on May 21st, 1881, the USTA, originally known as the United States National Lawn Tennis Association, was founded in New York City to create rules and standards for the emerging game of lawn tennis. And whereas the USTA is a nonprofit national governing body for tennis in the United States and leads the promotion and growth of the sport at every level of play from beginners to professionals at the US Open, which of course was headquartered in our area in 2017. Whereas the USTA is the largest tennis organization in the world with over 550,000 members from every corner of the country. And whereas the USTA proudly partners with local tennis programs to showcase the importance, the important health, social, and educational benefits of tennis and make the sport available to everyone regardless of age, environment, condition, or ability through the USTA Adaptive Grants. And whereas the latest research by the Physical Activity Council shows that more than 26, excuse me, 23.6 million Americans played tennis in 2022, an unprecedented 33% increase in participation over 2019, and the highest number of players since the PAC study began in 2007. And whereas by increasing the accessibility of tennis for citizens of Hartford of all ages and ability, the USTA has contributed to making our community happier and healthier. And whereas the USTA has declared the month of May as National Tennis Month to encourage players, organizations, facilities, retailers, tennis manufacturers, and more to promote local programs and activities at parks and facilities to showcase tennis and bring the word about the sport and its benefits and to help players and non-players alike find courts and play opportunities in their communities. Now therefore, I, Timothy C. Mahalik, Mayor of the City of Wisconsin, proclaim May 2023 as National Tennis Month. And hereby urge the citizens of Hartford to become aware of and support National Tennis Month. So thank you very much. We have that taken care of. And we have next, final standing. I'm sorry. Aldermanic request. Oh, you guys really do want to say something. Okay, I suppose. We do have Aldermanic requests. Any Aldermanic person wishing to say anything would be on the list, so we start with, as I can now say for the first time, President Rosniak.
Thank you. Thank you again to all of you for the votes tonight. I am humbled and honored to be council president. Secondly, later tonight, I've got to call Dennis Hagie on a different issue, but Dennis currently is going to be at St. Luke's Hospital for the next two weeks undergoing a special treatment. So our thoughts and prayers should be with Dennis and on now through this procedure.
Okay. Getting everybody's name out here. Alder Person Regan.
Mayor, I have two things tonight. First, I'd like to thank my family and the residents of the Second District for electing me to represent them. I will do my part in fulfilling the responsibilities of this position. Second, I attended the meeting of the Mid-Marin Legislative Committee last week Wednesday with former Alderman Dennis Hagie. One of the topics discussed was the type and status of various fire departments that participate in the organization. Comparatively, Hartford should be proud of its fire department. The other topic was the sales tax referendum that the group placed on the ballot on Election Day. With the overwhelming support it received from the electorate, the group is planning to meet with county officials to work on getting some of this sales tax revenue back to the municipalities it came from. Thank you.
Super. Thank you very much. Alder Person Garza.
Yeah, just like to welcome Tina to the Third District seating area over here, and I'd like to also welcome Dennis to the Second District area. I hope you too enjoy being on the council. It's work, it's fun. I mean, you get to help lead, which is the best thing. Aside from that, congratulations to Wayne for being the president, and that's all I have.
Super. Alder Person Carroll.
Like to welcome Dennis and Tina, and welcome back Jeff, and congratulations to Wayne for being council president.
Alder Person Webb.
I'd echo comments. Welcome, Dennis. Welcome, Tina. Very excited to have you, and I think it's incredibly important for people to run for positions and be involved on the council and represent their constituents. So I encourage everybody, when there's an election coming up, to consider running. Congrats to Wayne on president. Congrats Jeff Turchi on winning an unopposed race. And yeah, I look forward to working together with everybody.
Alder Person Savage.
All right, I just want to say thank you to everybody who supported me, my family, Hartford, and I'm excited to work with all of you, and congratulations, Wayne.
Alder Person Philip.
Welcome aboard. New people. Wayne, congrats. Thanks.
Old people.
I didn't say that.
You were thinking it.
Okay, on our wonderful Zoom technology, Alder Person Kohler.
I'm just welcoming everybody onto the board, and it should be an interesting year, so welcome aboard and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Alder Person Turchi.
Yeah, congratulations to Wayne, and welcome aboard the two new members of the council.
Super. Thank you very much. And with that, we go to Standing Committee Reports. That would be our new president, Rosniak, Chair of Finance and Personnel.
One item tonight, discussion and consideration of approving a fermented malt beverage and intoxicating liquor license to A&amp;M Cafe LLC at 39 North Main Street. This is Lori's bag here, the former Perk Place, correct, Lori?
Right. A&amp;M Cafe is looking to buy out Perk Place, and so they need to apply for a new liquor license.
Sure. Our finance committee met several weeks ago and would approve the liquor license.
Thank you very much.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Rosniak. With that, we would look for a motion to approve A&amp;M Cafe's license request. Alder Person Philip, seconded by Alder Person Garza.
Motion by Alder Person Philip, seconded by Alder Person Garza approving a fermented malt beverage and intoxicating liquor license to A&amp;M Cafe LLC at 39 North Main Street.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we skipped on to the city administrator's report, discussion of funding for Centennial Park Project and DNR funding. This, to my knowledge, is only discussion. There will not be any type of vote, correct?
That is correct, and city engineer John is here to talk more about the most recent updates on the Centennial Park Project that you've all seen. So, John?
Documents you have in front. Graphic. There we go. Centennial Park. As we've been moving forward with the project, last year, we had geotechnical borings done for the new building, the pavilion building, the parking lots, and so forth. Some contamination was found. And mostly on the east end of the park and a little bit on the west end. Nonetheless, we've proceeded with the project. We have been sending the material soils that we're encountering out to the landfill as we're digging footings and so forth. Last month, we've been working also with the Washington County Brownfield Program who's funding this work for us. The city has about a 20% ownership and paying for the environmental investigation out here. Bottom line is we've got PAHs, poly acrymatic hydrocarbons. Anyway.
Well, the rule is, you know, if you can't pronounce it, we don't have to pay for it.
Exactly. Wouldn't you think so? This is the exact same material that was found when the school was demolished and the library was built, but the rules and regulations back then allowed it to remain in place as long as we didn't touch it. It could stay. It's not hurting anything, fish or wildlife. However, the rules have changed since then, and the criteria are more stringent than they used to be, and they do not want the green areas of the park, the DNR does not want the green areas of the park to be, you know, have kids sitting on them playing in the dirt or the grass and things without removing two feet of the soil that's there in the green areas and replacing it with clean fill. There is also an environmental closure that needs to be taken care of. Bottom line for me is I've asked Wondra. I notified him at the end of last week and confirmed on Monday that this is the last week of any site work for now, for the time being, because the DNR has asked us to prepare a remedial action report which would identify the alternatives for capping the site. The cheapest way to do it is what I just explained, removing a couple feet of soil and bringing in new, and then sending that soil that we removed to the landfill. It's a very expensive proposition. We have I've got these other two documents that I've shared with you here today. One is my estimate. At this point, I know in my executive summary it's at 250,000, but we've changed some of the calculations slightly and added some some contingency, because this has been the project that's always needed some contingency that we didn't have. But nonetheless, the construction costs, the handout I gave you, approximately 180,000, approximately 90,000 for the environmental services, 272,000 is the current forecast. I did find a way to finance this. The county also has an EPA grant for remediating sites. If we were to follow that procedure that's on the last sheet of your packet there. And it is a revolving loan fund through EPA that's managed by the county. This is one of those crazy flow charts, but what happens is that if we follow through this, we develop a remedial action plan, EPA and the county are on board to pay for the work, or to help us pay for the work. They could loan us the money, the 270,000 and change. 10% of that would be forgivable sometime in the future. And it would just be a way to lessen the blunt of the impact of having to deal with this unanticipated cost of the project. So I'm looking at that, and I came to you tonight just to let you know what's going on. Good news is we're doing well on the project. Otherwise, we're at a good point to slow or cease the site work for now. The pavilion construction will continue. It's not a problem for us or for the soil issues. In fact, within three weeks, we should have trusses on the building, so it's going to happen that fast. So we'll continue to build the pavilion, but we'll take a stand down until we decide. Next month, I'll bring you more detail. I will ask the Public Works Committee to meet with me in May. And Alder Person Philip, I'll ask you and your new crew to sit with me. We'll go through the alternatives and the costs, and we may be approaching you then at the end of May with a decision point on how we feel is the best way to proceed. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Mahalik.
Thank you. My question, just so I'm sure I heard the numbers right, so we're able to get, if we go through this flow chart with the county, and that we would reduce it to, we would only be responsible for 90% then?
That is correct.
And so the most we would get is 10%? What is, is there additional cost to following that flow chart, and what are our chances of capturing that 10%?
We have good chances to capture that. It will take more time, though. It will take probably to the end of August to get all the approvals and the underwriting done for the revolving loan and to make it happen. The other complication is that it's federal money, of course, from EPA, so we would have to rebid.
Prevailing wage.
Well, we'll have to use prevailing wages.
We don't have to now.
No.
Then don't do it. It'll cost you more than 10%.
Oh, I'm just saying.
Just letting everybody here know, I don't know if you're familiar with prevailing wage, but prevailing wage, it could end up costing us more money.
It could very well. It could very well. I'm not so worried about that, Mr. Mayor, because I know that Wondra is a, is a union shop, so they are paying prevailing wages, or real close, maybe a little higher, a little lower, but they're right about there, because they're doing state jobs and so forth.
Who swallows the additional administrative costs when we go into a prevailing wage ridiculousness?
Yeah, well, it's the, it's the management of the program and the contract and the whole project becomes a really huge thing, like with our CDBD grants last year.
Right. What are the chances then of Wondra coming back to us and saying, this is not within the scope of the contract, and we have to give, we have to charge X because we're delaying this by four months, there's inflation, there's other projects that we've had on the calendar that we have to push back, that's going to cost us money, that's all going to be a pass-through cost, so 10% might, a very good chance it will not cover the additional cost of prevailing wage administration. I appreciate you looking at it, but I'm just spinning this in my head and having been part of a lot of these different projects, delays, another way to say delays is money. And if we're going to lose more than we could gain, I would just as soon speed it up and not worry about the 10%. If there's any way within a reasonable amount of time, you can calculate, and I know that's putting a burden on you, and I, you know, but thank you for that.
No, I'm looking at it both ways, because I wanted to be able to come to you and say, look, here's what it's going to take out of our hide, get your checkbook out, or if we want to take it a little easier and slower, we could go this other route and get some help.
With a possibility of saving money after the folks come back with this, with their contract in hand and say, we've got to renegotiate this, and then the prevailing wage ridiculousness descends upon us, even though it would match the wage. The administrative cost is extraordinarily burdensome, which is why I went twice to the Capitol as the mayor and fought against prevailing wage for municipal projects. And we got it rolled back for municipal and for county unless the federal government suddenly comes in, which we would be introducing into this project by following that flow chart, and then the this project by following that flow chart, and then the descent of the ridiculousness comes upon us.
Understood, understood. The fastest we could continue would be perhaps a month to six weeks of delay in the site work, because we still need to have the environmental consultant develop a remedial action plan, stating the alternatives, including the obvious, the cheapest one is what we'd want to do, which is remove some of the soil and replace it.
Right.
And then they have to approve that before we can move forward. So, either way, I will keep sharpening the numbers, I just wanted you to know before, you know, this is evolving over the last four, five days, and so we rushed to add this to your agenda tonight, just so that we could give you a little informational report on what's going on.
Thank you.
Wayne?
Funding source besides the county, Steve, maybe I can direct this at you, is tapping into our undesignated fund balance for 270,000, is that a possibility?
That's the only way.
It's the only way, okay, it's a very good possibility.
Or a large donation from the Wayne Rosniak Memorial Fund. We named the park after you.
That's a minute possibility, let's face it.
But you're saying it's not off the table yet.
Okay, well, that's the first thing I thought of was undesignated fund balance, we can't take it out of the donated funds from people because that's not fair, this is a quarter million dollar surprise.
Well, and the thing is, I mean, it could come out of your park funds, this is all a part of an improvement to an existing park.
But I don't think it should come out of donated park funds.
Oh, donated park funds, no, we're talking about, I'm switching the word donated, but whenever someone pays for a new building improvement, they have to pay park fees, those park fees could be used towards this, but we pretty much, you know, used up almost 99% of all those on this project already, because as you know, this project has been well over budget for quite some time because of some issues with the state, but I will not go into that. But the bottom line is, is that, that's, yeah, that's probably the best option right now.
It's just not fair to people that donated a Centennial Park to pay for this surprise, we can't do that.
Correct.
Right, and we have grants involved, so we've been moving forward to try and acknowledge that, you know, we have those contributions from individuals and companies and this grant program and so forth. Alder Person Philip.
Got a few questions.
Yes, please.
One is, just so I understand this, because mine's kind of, doesn't have a title, this to me is the process that you need to go through with respect to getting funds from the government or from the county that offsets this 272 that you're talking about?
Yes.
So, as part of that flow, it talks about determining the Region 5 attorney and project manager that's by the US EPA, they designate those individuals?
Yes.
And then at the bottom, it says, hey, there's a review for potential violations, is it that same committee that reviews those violations and what are they looking for with this? What could we violate so that we don't get this money, I'm not quite understanding this flow.
It could be as simple as not following procurement procedures properly, because federal procurement is different, we would be bidding for a month to do the work instead of two weeks as we normally do and so forth.
So then what happens, we fail or are we reset and recover back?
Well, then they would give us the money or take it back, I don't, I really don't know, I just wanted you to know that I was looking at this as an alternative so that we didn't have to take a hit if that was something that you and the committee and the council wanted to pursue.
Okay.
There are some alternatives, and I wanted to let you know that it's not just, you know, get the checkbook out, we could do something different, but we would have to work within the constraints of the existing programs that are out there.
Got it, in your brief explanation, you mentioned that this ground is contaminated, right?
Yes.
We're pulling it all away, because you said we would be capping it, which is more of a mitigation rather than a remediation, so I want to understand that terminology and what we're actually doing.
Okay, it's interesting, the DNR considers the building, the parking lots and the concrete sidewalks as being capping the soil, and what they're trying to do is protect the public from, you know, rolling around in the dirt, essentially.
And they're saying capping it because it's a non-pervious...
Yeah, and so, rather than, seeing as we want open green areas, they want us to take two feet of soil out, get rid of it and then bring in clean soil.
So, I'm under the assumption...
And that is the cap.
I'm under the assumption that below two feet it's contaminated.
It is.
Got it, so do we have potential of drain water or rain water going into the pond now with these high levels of chemicals that they're looking at?
It's always been there.
It's always been there, like I said, on the, on the library side, back in, when that, when that project was done, the rules were slightly different and they said just leave it in place.
So, there's no liability from the railroad or from the Chrysler plant for this contamination, is it?
Been doing some research into that, and based on my read of the agreement between Chrysler and the city, the city was responsible to take down their buildings and fill the park.
Okay, I don't have any more for now, I guess I'll see how this manifests, but just kind of curious that they allow us to cap it and then just say, hey, that's good.
Yeah, that's kind of what they do now, because if they made us clean it up, we may never be able to do it.
I don't know how these chemicals behave, right, so we're going to cap it, is it a VOC that comes out in porous airborne particulate, I know it's always there and you can look at particle count, so with that, are we going to be looking at long-term well or monitoring if we're going to do mitigation rather than remediation?
It will be, we're anticipating, and I did talk to the DNR last Thursday about this, and they said that capping would work, we're looking at a potential of two years of continued monitoring before they would allow us to close the site if we did the capping and followed up with that additional testing.
Okay, I know I've got nothing else, Mayor, thank you, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, my personal opinion is whenever you're involving the federal government on something along this side, and they're only doing 10%, and like you mentioned, Alder Person Philip, that they're going to be staring at every little T and I to make sure that the crosses and dots are there for the 10% in that flow, and the fact that it's going to delay this even further than just moving forward, I have two words, run away, in my personal opinion.
Well, I just want, it was kind of strange that I put in there looking for violations, right?
I agree.
So, I want to understand the game upfront, right, so not that the rules are changing when we get to the bottom of the box and say, hey, you didn't get this, right?
Well put, and then the delay was for nothing.
Okay.
So, thank you very much for setting this up.
Thank you for your time, and sorry for the new council Alder Persons that we threw the satchel in your first night.
Well, this made it fun, come on. Okay, Steve, is that it?
What's that?
Is that it?
That's all.
Okay, thank you very much, and for adjournment, Alder Person Savage, seconded by Alder Person Reagan. The newbies. Yes, the newbies, absolutely, okay, for adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned, thank you.